Called order, the meeting of the City of Columbia City Council on this October 7th, 2025. I'm very pleased that we have two representatives here, student representatives from Columbia High School, Alexis Davis and Leah Shipe, and we thank you for coming tonight. And so we will start as we always do, we'll have the invocation by Deanne, and then our two student reps will lead us in the pledge of allegiance to the flag. Deanne?
Lord, we pray that you will give our council members the faith and courage to carry on their duties, help them to do right, to deal fairly with others, and to place their trust in you. In your name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, ladies. You did very well under duress. At this time, I'll ask Deanne to do the roll call.
Kato?
Here.
Souter? D'Attilio?
Here.
Liston?
Here.
Graham?
Here.
Banner?
Here.
Noel?
Here.
Willard?
Here.
Hudson?
Here.
You all received a copy of the minutes of the September 16th, 2025 meeting. Are there any comments or statements regarding those minutes? Hearing none, they will be accepted as submitted. Under reading of communications, I have two things, and I think all of you up here have a copy of this, but we were asking, I think it's a great thing to announce, that the Columbia High School baseball team is having a mattress fundraiser on Sunday, October 26th. And they're doing this to help support their baseball team. Apparently, they go south for the winter for the spring baseball, and they've asked us if we could support their project. And so you've all received a copy of this fundraiser information, and we will add this information to our community calendar and make sure that everybody is aware of that, of that activity. I would also like to announce that, and I think you all have a copy from Flying High, Inc., a nonprofit organization. And I'm going to read this real quickly to myself and Mr. Willard in partnership with the Mahoney and Columbia County Ohio Means Jobs. Flying High, Inc. will be holding a job fair on October 29th at Risers Tavern on the Links from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. We are pleased to be holding it in the city of Columbia to connect residents to many local employers who are offering good paid jobs. Flying High, Inc. has a long history of helping people become prepared and connect to careers. Our integrated workforce services provide job candidates with support services to overcome any employment barriers and accelerate training programs that are customized to employer demand. We've helped over 600 overcome employment barriers, and approximately 1,100 people have become employed since 2017. We are asking for your assistance in the following ways. Promote the job fair with local companies that would like to have a table there, and our job developers will follow up and send them an invitation. And number two, be part of a messaging to connect local people to local jobs by advertising the job fair on social media and your other platforms. I appreciate your consideration to help your many employers meet their workforce needs. Please contact me to discuss the event further at 330-881-9876. So you receive that information, we'll also support that project and put it on our calendar so that everyone will be aware of that as well.
Everett, could you, you were going to talk about Safety Day too, it's coupled down?
Oh, I'm sorry. You put it there and I said I didn't. I'm good, it's fine. Also, we have the 21st Annual City of Columbia Community Safety Day, sponsored and presented by the Columbia Fire Department, Columbia EMS, and Columbia Police and Scout Employers Post 29. It will be on Saturday, October 11th, 2025, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at Station 1, located on South Vine Street. And they'll be giving safety awareness tips, department history, interaction with all our city's safety forces. Emergency equipment and vehicle will be displayed, and the Joshua Dixon Safety Poster Display will be there. And so we encourage everybody to take part in that. We're really proud of our emergency services that we provide in Columbia. We have a great group of people that are involved in our safety. We're very blessed. And I think it's a good time to interchange, especially if you have young children that want to come and sit in the police car or get into a fire truck. It's a good opportunity to do that, so I did want to announce that. Anything else? Did I miss anything else, Dan?
I think.
I have no reports of commissions and boards, and we have nobody requesting recognition for people to appear here before us. So at this point, I'll turn the agenda over to the managers' report and turn that over to Lance.
Okay, thanks, Mayor. So I wanted to make you aware, we did put opportunity for us to go out to Ohio Public Works, OPWC, for a grant opportunity or a lower interest loan. We have a sewer that needs to be, basically, we worked, it's on Middle Street, it's just west of Joshua Dixon. So we've got a deadline this month to put that in there. So we're working with Omega, and they're helping us on that project. So tonight, we have on legislation authorizing me to file that application with OPWC. I'll give you a few things that have happened since the last meeting. Heartland Christian School conducted a day of prayer, which included praying for for the safety of city officials, staff, and departments. And then they generously provided pizza and cards of appreciation to the city. They just showed up here one day unexpectedly, so it's kind of cool. We've been talking about our staffing down at the street department and service director position. And service director's position will be filled to work on these special projects that we have going on. A lot of projects coming up over the next year. So we've got on legislation to move Jesse Wilson to the service director position just to do those particular projects. And then we did have a crew that looked, some volunteers to to interview the next street superintendent. And we're proud to announce Kurt Seacrest, he's an internal applicant, has been here since, I believe, 1999, I believe. And he knows the job, and he's going to, I think he'll be a good fit for that department, and we'll have that legislation for both of those on the agenda tonight. We've been getting a lot of developers looking at the city for residential, commercial, and industrial properties in the city, so that's been interesting. We'll see what comes of that. I think I mentioned it to you, last meeting, Humtown sponsored an appreciation lunch for the city employees. Thank you to Mark LaMancha for kindness and for everyone attending. So we basically shut down Vine Street right out in front of the fire department and sat at the fire department, and he had a food truck come, and it was a nice day, so we do appreciate that. We presented a bridge, the bridge that's on West Southern Avenue to ODOT for the 2026 Municipal Bridge Program for Grant Funding. They put out a list of every year of available bridges, and West Southern was on there, so we went ahead and plied, and we did present that to them. We haven't heard back yet. Bryce participated in a webinar about the future of drones for municipal use, so it's kind of interesting. We'll see how that goes. They're doing awesome studies in the state, and we'll keep you up. As information comes in, we'll let you know what's on the horizon. Bryce attended the Youngstown Warren Regional Chamber, lattes with legislators. State Senator Michelle Reynolds, Chair of Housing Committee was there. The mayor, Skip Bryce, attended Youngstown Warren Regional Chamber, Good Morning East Palestine, which, that was a great event, great turnout. And East Palestine, we did a nice job, and they were very complimentary to Columbia, as the mayor said, so it was, it's been nice working with them, and we'll continue to do that. We did attend the Columbia Chambers Connect Columbia, it's an event at Sweet Melissa's. The Youngstown Business Incubator was a speaker and a sponsor. These are monthly networking events, and council's always invited, and we'll put that in your packets as they come through. We met with HRG to discuss the Phase 2 ODOT project that we're doing next year, and kind of walked the whole thing, and we're finalizing the plans. And I think we're getting pretty close to submitting everything for that. We were invited to attend the Lake the River Regional Talent Summit and participated in the panel on population retention growth. It was a really interesting, great opportunity. We got sat on a panel, and we talked about our youth engagement program and also the growth in development within the city, and it worked out. It was a really nice event, so it was 250 people at the event, so, well, well-attended. So we realized that when John Yengas stepped down, we did not replace him on the school board as liaison. You know, we had that position that he volunteered to do. We talked about it and started sending him to school board meetings. So I think it would be good if anybody else was interested, or if you wanted to talk about it, you could even do it at the end of my manager's report, who might be interested, and then maybe take action and point somebody to attend those meetings when they can. Participated in a call, I mentioned, with the Columbia County Port Authority. They have a new, a couple of new economic development tools that we're not that familiar with. But we sat in on a call, and actually, Mark was there. He's familiar with PACE and ESSIDS, so as we learn more information, we will we'll let you know, we'll give you a summary, probably over the next couple of meetings. Basically, we have to pass legislation to become part of this program. And what this allows developers to do is to use an economic development tool that helps them in their funding of the project. So we'll talk a little bit more about that, probably next meeting, we'll have a little bit more details for you. And it's always fun, the third grade students from Joshua Dixon visited City Hall, so I don't know if you all did that when you came up. That's really fun, the world according to a third grader is very interesting. And the mayor, Mayor and I actually had four groups of about 20 come in, and we spent about 20 minutes with them talking about the city's government, how it works, and they all got to sit up here at these seats. And then we talked to them about you all coming and told them that, you know, when they get older, they can do that, and then maybe they can, when they can, you know, graduate, they can participate in the community, so. But yes, it was very interesting, and they had some pretty good answers. And the mayor had some pretty good questions for them, like who founded Columbia, and not one of them got it, but boy, they they recognized the name of Joshua Dixon once they told them that's who it was, so it's kind of cool. We're in that gas aggregation program, and if you're familiar, we have the opt-out letters that go out. There are a set that are going out to new community members, and anyone, you may get one at home, but you may already be in it. But it's more meant for new community members and anyone else who would like to rejoin. Talked about the Court and Herbster Stormwater Project for a while now. We did get it on the agenda as emergency legislation to to go out to bid, and we're going to hopefully put it in the paper on on Friday, I believe, and then we'll get bids back late next month and try to get somebody in here to start on that project. That's the one that was from the FEMA BRIC program, and we have until late next summer to finish that project, so we've got to start on that. Should note that the Beverly Ray project that we've been talking about for years is, they're mobilizing right now. They'll be here any day if they didn't already show up, and they're going to start probably back in Bay and Ray or Beverly, one of the two streets. And we'll do the best we can do to let the neighbors know what we're doing out there at any given time. Electric part, moving on to the departments, they did eight residential hookups. They removed a tree from Creek Road that had fallen, and they had to replace old wire and transformer on West Park Avenue. Park and Cemetery, they poured the foundation for the new columbariums in the cemetery. This intention is to be able to sell those spots to the public as of first of the year. We're removing mulch and leaves already. If you notice, the pool still has water in it. Typically, we drain it. But we're going to be having some leak detection, leak detection people come in and see if we can find any leaks, and they'll be doing that later at the end of October. Water Department, they completed 34 locates, 35 work orders, laid some water taps, and they started exercising those valves like they did last year. Street Department, they picked up eight loads of brush, patched potholes with eight tons of fill, and landscaped and seeded water breaks, previous water breaks. Waste Water Department, they did some sewer jetting throughout the system, but they also helped on this OPWC application, trying to get ready. We actually filmed that line, so we knew what we're up against there. EMS, they're working on a training plan for next year. The Police Department is in the process of entry-level testing and preparation to hire or replace a loss of two officers. And they reported that the third graders came and visited the Police Department, and officers led the tour and had a great time teaching students how the departments operate, so. That with the Saturday's, you know, event is kind of cool to get the students, you know, involved, and hope they all show up. So I don't know if you had, wanted to have, that's the end of my report, if you wanted to have a conversation, who would be interested and to go out to the school boards?
Sure.
Meetings?
Do we have anybody on council that's interested?
If you're willing to do it.
Ty, anybody else? All right, and I'd like to make a motion to appoint Ty as the council representative of the school board. Hey, we have a motion second. Do you have me to call the roll?
Kato?
Yes.
D'Attilio?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Graham?
Abstain.
Banner?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you, Ty, for volunteering. We appreciate it. Be very proud of you on that.
Well, apparently, there's a small power outage.
Right now? Are you going to go work on it?
No.
Okay, me neither.
My house.
Oh, by the way, we are doing utility shut-offs for past people that, it's just a joke. Yeah. Good, no, but I haven't seen you guys in three weeks, you know. Mayor, I did want to also point out that we do have some emergency ordinances. I've been talking about them, even though there are emergencies, we have, I mentioned them at the last meeting. So we do have several of those, but the one that I did not talk about is the, let's see, right away, we were working with, been working with Hillcorp on one of our pieces of property on a right-of-way, and Mark has been, you know, involved in that for a while now, and that is on the agenda. We just want to get that get that all done, so they can start putting a line in out there within that easement, so.
Thank you. Any questions for Lance? My quick comment is that it was really fun on the founding to watch their face, the kids' faces, when they were guessing Harvey Farstone founded Columbia, and they were all guessing. And then I'd go, you know this answer, you know, and they're all looking at it. And then you'd say Joshua Dixon, and they were all, you know, they all freak out. And Lance did a fun thing, when he had all the children up here, he told them about them voting, and and we talked about that, and yeah, the one that I liked was he'd say, okay, we're going to vote on putting a traffic a stop sign at the square in each corner, and are you going to vote for it or against it? And so the kids got to vote, and it was fun watching them react to, you know, like, oh, that's kind of what, it was a fun day.
How did they vote?
They were pretty split, but what the funny one was, is we just did a theoretical vote on FunLand. And I told them how much it would cost, and they go, that's too expensive, and they voted it down, you know? So, but, so that was about, I think only one class actually passed that, so.
But it was, it's a good day. I think they enjoyed it.
Yeah, definitely.
It's a very good thing to do. You received a copy of the mayor's court report for September of 2025. Are there any questions on the mayor's court report? Hearing none, and you also received a copy of the bill list of October 7th, 2025. Are there any questions or comments on the bill list?
Brush hogging is expensive. Is that one line item for?
Yeah.
Brush hogging at the North Substation.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to move the agenda to Old Business, and I would entertain a motion to read all ordinances and resolutions by title only.
So move.
Second.
Motion is second. Do you have me to call the roll?
D'Attilio?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Kato?
Yes.
Old Business Ordinance Number 25-0-3305, second reading, an ordinance to approve the execution of an efficiency smart schedule with American Municipal Power, Inc.
So move.
Second.
Motion is second. Any questions on the motion? Do you have me to call the roll?
Liston?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Kato?
Yes.
D'Attilio?
Yes.
New business. I would like to refer you first and foremost to Item F. Ordinance Number 25-0-3308, first reading, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with House and Baird, Inc., civil engineers and surveyors for the purpose of providing engineering services for the building design and building renovations for a new City Hall administration building and Police Department for the city of Columbia.
So move.
Second.
Motion is second. Any questions or comments on the motion? Do you have me to call the roll?
Graham?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Kato?
Yes.
D'Attilio?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
I would like to entertain a motion to read the following ordinances and resolutions as an emergency.
So move.
Second.
Motion is second. Do you have me to call the roll?
Banner?
Yes.
Kato?
Yes.
D'Attilio?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
Ordinance Number 25-0-3306, emergency. An emergency ordinance amending ordinance number 25-0-3288, setting salaries and establishing positions and other conditions of employment for certain appointed personnel of the city of Columbia.
So move.
Second.
Motion is second. Any questions or comments regarding the motion? Do you have me to call the roll?
Kato?
Yes.
D'Attilio?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Resolution Number 25-R-673, emergency. An emergency resolution approving the appointment by the city manager of a street superintendent for the city of Columbia as of the fifth day of October, 2025.
So move.
Second.
Motion is second. Do you have me to call the roll?
D'Attilio?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Kato?
Yes.
Resolution Number 25-R-674, emergency. An emergency resolution approving the appointment by the city manager of a service director for the city of Columbia as of the fifth day of October, 2025.
So move.
Second.
Motion is second. Deanne, will you call the roll?
Liston?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Kato?
Yes.
D'Attilio?
Yes.
Resolution Number 25-R-675, emergency. An emergency resolution authorizing the city manager to prepare and submit an application to participate in the Ohio Public Works Commission's state capital improvement and/or local transportation improvement programs and to execute contracts as required.
So move.
Second.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Graham?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Kato?
Yes.
D'Attilio?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Ordinance Number 25-0-3307, emergency. An emergency ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter to enter into a right-of-way agreement regarding certain rural property owned by the municipality.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Do you have me call the roll?
Banner?
Yes.
Kato?
Yes.
Dutilio?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
Ordinance Number twenty-five dash O dash three three zero nine, emergency. An emergency ordinance authorizing the city manager to advertise for bids for the purpose of entering into a contract for the furnishing of the necessary construction materials, equipment and labor for the Court, Herbster Street Storm Sewer Project for the city of Columbia.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Do you have me call the roll?
Kato?
Yes.
Dutilio?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
This time in the agenda, we've completed all business items and we have an opportunity. Is there anybody from the public that would like to speak at this point? In the comments. Okay, are there any council comments?
I'd just like to say, ladies, I don't know if you understand this or not, but you can comment as we're going through this or ask questions. That would be fine. We, we'd encourage that. Okay.
Any other questions or comments? I would like to formally thank you two young ladies for coming this evening. We love to have our youth involved in our city, because someday you'll have to take it over. And, you know, we're glad that you come here and we are, I agree with Skip here. We'd love to hear your comments and you don't even have to tell us now, you can tell us later. So we do appreciate that and I, I would like to say that that, you know, Lance mentioned in his presentation about speaking at that meet, Lake the River Meeting and being on a panels. You know, he was on a very distinguished panel, first of all. Bill Johnson, who was president of Youngstown State University, was on that panel with him, a couple other very important people and we are getting selected and he specifically getting selected because we really feel it's important to work, work with the young people and they'd, other communities like to hear about what we do with youth engagement in Columbia. So Lance did a beautiful job, made some great comments and said some really great things about Columbia. I like that. And, but I, I think it's good for our community and we're well recognized in the region as someone that's heavily involved in, in specifically the youth engagement project, so just wanted to mention that. Any other comments? Any other words of wisdom? Well, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So moved.